We're hosting it tonight because tomorrow night is the night before Thanksgiving and Sidewoolie has traditionally always held it on a Tuesday so that those who need to leave town on Wednesday for travel for family, that they have time and ability to do that. So with that, if you will all please stand with me to say the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you. And we will do, we'll call real quick like, so Councilman Owen.
Yeah.
Councilman McGoffin, he said he was going to be online.
Present.
Yes, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Kestee.
Present.
Councilman Allen.
Present.
And Councilman Lavaca.
Present.
All right, thank you. One thing that was actually mentioned, and I think that I would like for us to do, is just take a moment of silence. These last couple of weeks have been horrific weeks across the United States. There's been a lot of violence and there was that fear today in Skagit Valley, and you just never know when something's going to come pretty close to home. And so the thought was, let's just take a moment and remember those who are recovering from these heinous crimes, those families, those individuals, those communities that have been impacted, and pray that for whatever reason or somehow this will come to an end. All right, thank you. All right, Council, we're going to begin with the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Owens, seconded by Councilman Burns. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns and seconded by Councilman Lavaca. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. So tonight, we do have a special guest. The Director of our library here in Sidewoolie, Jeanne Williams, is here. Jeanne, we're looking forward to hearing all that you have to share about what's going on. Thank you for being here tonight, by the way.
Thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate your time. I had 25 slides, but Charlie told me I needed to pare it down just a little bit. So I think next year, I want to get in front of you more often so that there's not so much to share in one fell swoop. So for those of you who don't know me, I am Jeanne Williams, Library Director of Central Skagit Library District, which administers the Sidewoolie Library. I've been a librarian for 20 years and a director for 18 of those years. I've lived in Sidewoolie for about seven years, and my eldest graduated from Sidewoolie High, and I have a sixth grader at Evergreen. I have a master's degree in Library and Information Science and a Master of Arts in Anthropology. And I just really appreciate the time to tell you about what's been going on. A lot of libraries in the valley and around the country are still having all their time recovering from the losses in usage during COVID. So I'm glad to say that we have more than recovered. So I'm glad to say that. So I did provide hard copies, in case you can't see, and they flip up like this. So our library district is governed by a five-member Board of Trustees. They're appointed by the Skagit Commissioners. And right now, there are three district residents and two city residents on the board. We have a staff of 11, including myself, and I'm really glad to work with a fun, extremely competent, very service-oriented group of people. So I'm very proud for the staff that I have. And I'm very glad that I have very low turnover. So what we're going to look at tonight, Bill, I don't know where we are on the, I think Bill's got control of the presentation. I'll give it a second, or I know the audience doesn't.
Sorry about that. I'm going to try sharing this again. I had a little troubles downloading it. Jeanne, the file was corrupted. So I'm going to go ahead and try a different tack here.
Okay. So Jeanne, do you want to follow the handout?
I can. I'm sorry, the audience doesn't have. We have a few up here, but I can go ahead and continue. So what I'm going to talk to you tonight about is our programs and services, which are services that go beyond our checking out of materials in the library. Bill, let me know if you get it going, because I'm not really facing the screen. I'm going to talk about library usage statistics, some of the challenges we're facing, future projects that we're going to work on, and then please, if you have questions, you can stop me anytime or if you want to ask at the end. So our programs and services, on this slide, this page, is our Youth Services Specialist, Alia Allen, and she is doing the Listening Song with her Storytime group. We really get a lot of use out of this early learning through playroom. I'm really glad it was part of our library design. So the reason we do these extra programs is that we know that library programs equip children with literacy skills. For teens and adults, it provides opportunities for self-directed learning as well as opportunities to develop community connections. And most importantly, it instills the importance of community and civic engagement. So in 2022, this is the first year that we've really been able to have our programs the way that we had. We really couldn't do any large-scale programs in 2021. So we're really glad to be back to, I guess, what you could call normal, as far as programs and services. So our youth programs for teens and children, we have four programs a week for children and teens. Those are pretty much every day there's something going on for the kids at the library. This year so far, 2,162 children have attended Storytime and Pokemon and other types of events, and almost 800 teens have attended programs like Anime Club and Dungeons and Dragons. With that, we've also distributed 4,779 educational kits. And what these are, take-home kits, that families can take home and work on at home. They're STEM-related, and we distribute those in the library as well as through Helping Hands, Food Bank, Children of the Valley, the School District, and the Boys and Girls Club. By far, the biggest program that we do every year is our Summer Reading Program. So this program is designed to combat the summer slide in reading skills while the children are out of school. What we do is children sign up, and they log their minutes over the summer, and there are specific goals they reach where they get to choose prizes. And it's really, it's, we're all in, you know, this is something that takes the whole staff to manage a three-month program, but we're really happy with it. This year, the total minutes read by all the children who participated was 676,347 minutes. Of those, the city school participants is 236,000 minutes read. So we're really proud of the amount of time and the effort the children put in to not letting their skills slide during the summer. We've been really lucky this year. We've been able to add another trained librarian to our staff, and so she is in charge of adult programming and adult services. And here on this slide, this is it. We're there. Good, Bill, we're right where we need to be. So our adult programs, we have ranged from workshops, tech help classes, we have several book clubs going on, we have different workshops as far as preparedness and Medicare. We have a new book club starting. It's called Mid-Month Murder Club, and we'll be, participants will also be able to do the Hunt a Killer murder series. So we're really looking forward to that. Next slide. So one of our second-biggest programs of the year is our Dia de los Muertos program. We've had this since 2017, and generally, it draws a very large crowd. And this year, we had over 550 participants. We had the Celta Tenoli Aztec dancers. We also had the Sidewoolie School District Folklorico dancers. We had resource booths for the Helping Hands, Food Bank, Skagit Cleaners, WIC, Behavioral Health, and Mona, the Museum of Northwest Art. So while people were enjoying the program, they also had resources that they could visit with people and find out what resources might be available. This is the first time we've done that, and I was really happy. It worked out very well. So I think that'll be a staple of this program going forward. We also could not have done it without Sidewoolie High School's Latinos-Unidos Club volunteers. They set up the night before, they managed the craft programs during the program, and they helped us clean up afterwards. So it was really, really big help. So our change in staffing also allowed our outreach specialist, who is a native Spanish speaker, to start doing multilingual programs. And she has started doing bilingual Storytimes at daycares in the community, and will be doing them in the library starting in 2023. She's also started a multilingual conversation club where people of different languages come to practice English, or if you're a Spanish speaker, an English speaker, you can come and practice Spanish. It's really just a group of a wide variety of languages, all practicing English. And it's, people really enjoy it, and it's been very helpful for people to, because sometimes you just don't have anyone to practice with. And through her work, she's, has partnerships that she's built with Sidewoolie Rise, the Children's Council of Skagit County, and the Latinos-Unidos at Sidewoolie High School. So next, I want to move into statistics. Next slide. This may be where the file falls apart. I started to put usage statistics in the horror font, because most people don't want to hear about statistics, but I'm really proud of these statistics. So we'll move on to the visits to the library page. So I don't really have good statistics for visits to the library prior to 2018, when we merged the libraries, because there were, Sidewoolie Library was using a different method for counting. But as you can see, outside of the anomaly of the 2020 and 2021 COVID years, we're on an upward trajectory, where we expect by the end of this year to have almost 60,000 people come through the door in a year's time. The meeting rooms are almost always booked. We've had over 1,450 bookings this year alone for the meeting rooms that we have. So it's a very important resource for the community, a free place to meet. Next is library checkouts. So again, you see that our trajectory outside of the anomalous COVID years is on an upward trajectory as well. We've actually more, by the end of the year, will have more than recovered from our, the losses that we took in 2020 and 21. Many libraries around the country and in the county are fighting to get people back in the doors, and we're not having that problem at all. And our circulation, so this is all of the physical items that we check out for the year. 2018 is when we merged our two libraries. So you see a really big jump there, and then it just continues to go up, other than the years of COVID. And during COVID, we did provide services, but it was curbside. So people were really limited in what they could get. This does not include our eBooks and other downloadable items, those I'll talk about in a minute. And if we go in, yeah, digital materials. So our digital materials have always been pretty strong since we merged our library district. In 2020, they really shot up because people needed reading materials, and getting them online was the best way to do it during that time. So even though we're open and we're back, you know, we have kind of a downturn on that, but it's still a very strong part of the services we offer, and we expect about 25,000 checkouts by the end of this year. So that digital collection is very important to our patrons as well. Next slide. So the new cards that we've issued, again, another upward trajectory. One of the things this doesn't reflect is that, once we opened the library and the COVID restrictions were over, we had hundreds of people who came in who had library cards for years but had stopped using the library, and they were coming back. So in a sense, they were new patrons, but the system doesn't really count them as new patrons. So I think if those were counted, we'd be near the 2,000 range for cards issued just this year. And this doesn't include the over 4,000 students we added from the Sidewoolie School District through an interlocal agreement. So now, students are automatically loaded into our system without even coming to the library. They can use all of our digital resources to do research and homework. If they come into the library, they can check items out. It's very easy, and that's how we have to make it, very easy. So we have a lot of students taking advantage of that service. Right now, our total number of library borrowers in our system is a little over 13,000. And so looking ahead, some of the future projects that we're going to be working on, right now, we're actually in the process of migrating our data to a new computer system. And what this is going to do is allow us to offer a better public catalog to search our materials. Right now, I don't know if any of you use our public catalog, but it's not very fun to use. It's very exacting. If you type "three" and the title of the book had the number three, it will not find it. It's that kind of problem. So now we'll have a catalog that you can search more like Google. It's a search engine. It'll also pull in all of our digital resources into one search, so it'll be a one-stop shop for all of our resources. We're very excited to offer this, because we get a lot of complaints about our current catalog. So I'm glad to say goodbye to that. We'll also be doing a needs assessment and working on our strategic plan in 2023. I'm actually working on a request for proposal now. I fully expect that some or all of you will be part of those focus group meetings and the things that we do as we plan for our future moves in the library and how they align with the city's goals as well. We'll also be expanding some of our community outreach activities. We'd like to start a process of delivering books to our local life-focus centers and assisted living centers. And then we're also exploring the addition of the electric vehicle charging. The building has the infrastructure. We just need to have that final step. And that may or may not include solar at some point. We've met and talked about solar initiatives in the future that I hope we could still continue to think about together. Next slide. And then some of the challenges that we're facing. Like most special-purpose districts in the state, particularly in this area, we lost a significant amount of Temple Trust funds as well. We lost, what averaged to be about $300,000 annually. Our levy rate is also getting pretty low. We're hovering around 26 cents per thousand, with inflation soaring. And I know that's hurting every agency, every municipality. We've also seen an increase in behavioral issues exhibited by patrons in the library, mental health crises. We're thrilled that we have a lot of children and teens coming in the library after school, but sometimes we're dealing with confrontational behavior, at-risk children. We know they have bad home situations. So we try to be very empathetic and work with them, and provide snacks seems to help a lot. So this is my quick run-through of how things are going. In conclusion, our trend, all of our usage is trending upward. I think we're becoming quickly the community hub, and that's what we all wanted when we, you know, built this library. The Board and I and my staff will continue to try to find ways to streamline service, to be efficient with our funds, and to move forward in an innovative way. So if you have any questions, I've got 10 or 15 more slides. One day, I'll come back and do those. And if you ever want to contact me, please feel free. I'm happy to share anything and see how the library can help in any of the initiatives that the city's doing.
That's very true, Jeanne. You're very accessible. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So are there any questions for Jeanne?
I have one question. I'm not a frequent visitor to the library, but what are your hours?
So we're open 10 to 6, six days a week.
Pardon me?
10 to 6, six days a week. That's what our staffing levels will allow at the time.
10 to 6?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we're closed Sunday.
I've had people come to me complaining about opening so early and closing so early. So I was just wondering. It doesn't bother me at all, because I don't go. I was probably a strong opponent of the library anyway, so I just, I'm glad it's there. It looks nice. And I had, I did go when we had our little retreat. That's the first time I was in the library, and it's very, very nice. It's really beautiful inside, so.
It's one of the gems of our community.
I can tell them now. Do you set the hours yourself?
Well, the Board and I do, but it really is determined by my staff. We can't have less than three people in the building for security purposes. When we're really busy, there's just no way to run it any less or any thinner with staff than I currently do. You know, at some point, we may have the funding to add more staff and more hours, but right now, we're kind of where we can be. And, you know, I've looked at opening later and staying open later, but we have people that are mad that we don't open at 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning. So we tried to kind of split the middle and get the middle of the day, plus having Saturday hours in hopes that if people can't get to us during the week, maybe they can get there on Saturday.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Nick?
Thank you very much. And thank you very much, Jeanne, for doing the library. It's such a blessing to have in the community, for sure. It is a big accent to downtown, and it's really nice to see. It looks wonderful. It looks beautiful. I just had a couple of questions. One was, we have the Dia de los Muertos, I believe I said that right. And I was just kind of curious on how that started. You said it's the fifth year we've been doing it, and I was just wanting to see a little history of how that became a part of Sidewoolie. And it's definitely an incredible culture. I've done a little bit of looking into the Aztec culture, and I think this one's where they get together and offer prayers to the goddess Makati Machua or something like that. Maybe you can clarify some of that? And how that got integrated within the, it seems like it's a wonderful culture, but it seems like, I was just curious on how that got.
It really was spearheaded by our outreach specialist, who is native Mexican. And when we looked at our service population and the Latin community, that we felt that was one way to draw people from that community in, because prior to our library, we found that very few of our Latin community were using the library at all. And we thought that might be one way to draw community members in from that culture. And then it just, it was so successful that we just continued to do it. And I'd love to see other cultural events. I'd love to do events with the Upper Skagit Tribe. I would love to see more. That just happened to be because we had a very passionate person on staff who took it on.
So is that something that is planned by the library to be an ongoing tradition of offering these prayers during the, or having the ceremony every year? Or are you guys going to mix up different cultures and get different areas of the world, or even our local community?
I would like to do more cultures. Like I said, this really just was spearheaded by someone who knew the culture. You know, now that we have more people from Ukraine and Russia, I would like to see programming there. It's just making those inroads and building that, building those bridges.
Yeah, it's definitely grown into something. I was reading up on it after I saw it in the newspaper to see kind of what the cultural thing was. I kind of did some studies, like I said, in the past with the Aztecs, but I didn't anticipate seeing it grow like that. So the other thing is, is there a community board in the library for anybody to go in and post things to, or in the community events or things like that?
We do. We have monitors in the library, and we scan them and put them on a slideshow. And then we also have, in our entry, spaces for brochures and booklets and things of that nature.
Okay. So there's an area for community members to go in, and that's pretty easily done. So if they went to the counter and said, hey, can I scan this and put this up on the board?
We'll scan it and put it up there for you.
Yeah, you guys would though? So there's, okay.
So Councilwoman Kestee?
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team, because you guys are doing an amazing job. And I'll have you know that the sixth graders at Evergreen, all I hear is DND stuff. So it's very popular with them, and you're doing a great job.
Thank you. We, our DND program, one of the things we really love about it is the STEM learning that's involved with the math and, you know, all the things that are involved in doing and with the dice and things like that. So I've been really happy to see that group thrive, and it's growing.
Okay. One more question, and then.
The youth programs and the summer reading look fantastic. I appreciate that you do that stuff with the kids. Have you considered doing anything with the youth drop-in program that the Y is putting down the street?
I would like to do things with the Y. We've just, the last few times I've tried to connect, they've been closed. So I don't know if they're repurposing their schedule and trying to do something different. But I definitely, we wanted to have them come and tour the library, and also make connections with the children, the after-school children that are coming to the library that may want a second place to go.
Great, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you for coming. The idea of coming maybe on a quarterly basis might be good.
Yeah, I'd love to.
All right, we'll talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeanne, can I ask one? Where do you hail from?
I came here from Mississippi.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move into City Administrator Report.
Yes, no report this evening. I've got a bunch of things on the agenda, though.
Okay, thank you. Council report. So Councilman Owen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have much to say. I just want to wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving, and that's about all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Councilman McGoffin?
Hi, thank you. I'd just like to echo that as well. No report, but want to wish everyone a Happy.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Diamond?
I just want to, Happy Thanksgiving, and also let you know about the excitement that I hear in my ward about the tree going up this weekend. So everybody's very excited about that tradition that we about that tradition that we hold strong to here in Cedar Woolley. And they're, they were excited to see the closure notice for Saturday and, and excited to watch it go up.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Burns?
Wanted to thank our officers for what I heard was a quick response today to the high school, and I'm really glad that there wasn't anything serious going on. Also, happy to see that the trees going up or hear that that's going to be happening, and look forward to seeing it, see it lit up this year. Want everybody to have a happy Thanksgiving and safe travels if you're heading somewhere.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kestie?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody that this Saturday is Shop Small Saturday. So, it's a great opportunity to visit the downtown local shops and support them.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Allen?
I would like to just say happy Thanksgiving, and thank you for all your support to me last month, in one of the least fun months I've had in the, oh, the first two weeks, anyway. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Lavaca?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to echo happy Thanksgiving. It's going to be a wonderful time this year. I've been hearing about the parade as well, and people that are getting excited about setting that up. I also wanted to send a special thanks to the staff. Mark, you called today. I did get your voicemail, and I do appreciate you guys, Kelly or Charlie or all you guys, when you reach out and just want to clarify or get some communication. And it's really awesome to see that kind of engagement. So, awesome. Thank you, guys.
All right. Thank you. And I only have a couple of things. First off, the position for Planning Commission closed today. We did have one application, so that'll be coming before the council, probably on the 14th. And so, be looking for that. I'm glad everybody mentioned the Christmas tree lighting and the parade that's coming up on the 3rd. And there's a lot of activities. Santa will be at the Woolley Market. And I know there's a Santa breakfast that's going to be at the community center. So, some great activities and traditions that we do here in Cedar Woolley. On top of that, I just want to reiterate what everybody else has said. I hope that everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Okay, moving on then to public comments. I'm going to open up public comment at 6:32, and you're welcome to come forward, state your name and address, and if possible, try to keep it to three minutes. All right. Thank you. Hi, Rob.
My name is Rob Janicki, and I'm the owner of the RJ Group. I am here because I am upset. Last week, the city notified us of pending changes to the code that has put 18 months of work and $130,000 of investment in jeopardy. For the past year, we have, we've been hard at work developing a beautiful, walkable, live-work community, a place where our homeowner can have their clothes mended by the tailor next door, buy homemade soup across the street, and run a personal accounting business while the newborn sleeps upstairs. A well-designed neighborhood, which will create 48 new two- and three-bedroom homes, not to mention incubation space for homegrown startups and increased local tax revenues. Imagine our shock and dismay last week when we learned of an amendment being reviewed by the Planning Commission, an amendment which, if adopted, will have serious ramifications for the design and brokerage of live-work homes. The city neglected to inform us of this amendment when it was introduced in August, in spite of the fact that we requested the live-work building application and design criteria as early as November of last year, and again in August, September, and October. It is not fair to change the rules in the middle of the game. If the proposed amendment is adopted and my project is forced to comply, it will cost us thousands to redesign and give heartburn to any prospective lender. Even if the city grandfather's us in for our current design, its stipulations requiring homeowners to sign a contract with the city planning department would make the homes undesirable to most buyers. In short, the amendment would render local live-work housing products unsalable. This is the latest in a long line of frustrations precipitated by the city's failure to constructively communicate. We presented a pedestrian-centered site plan at our pre-app with no serious objections from city staff, only to receive criticism months later that the commercial space has no street frontage. We asked in the pre-app how work, parking will be calculated for live-work homes, and were provided comments that only indicated residential parking requirements. Then, several months later, we were told both residential and commercial parking applied. Any of these by themselves would be forgivable oversight. Together, they represent a clear pattern of failure to provide accurate guidance early in the design process. We are not trying to break any rules. We simply want to, the city to practice transparency and accuracy in telling us what those rules are. Every time the city provides incomplete, inconsistent, or vague responses, time is wasted, and the dollars are adding up. To move forward, we need certainty, confirmed in writing from the city as to which application will render our development fully vested, and at what point buyers would be, be required to adhere to the proposed code. We need the city to improve the quality of communication to developers like ourselves, who are simply trying to understand what the city requires and expects of us. Finally, we ask that the city implement a formal design review process, a process which would precede building, engineering, and land division applications, and give developers like me an opportunity to receive clear and complete feedback investment early on, before spending thousands on engineering and design. Not including Janicki Industries, the RJ Group has generated over $6 million in sales tax and $6 million in city fees since we started working in this city. Nothing would please me more than to bring more jobs, more housing, and more tax revenue to the city of Cedar Woolley. Tell me what the rules are, and we'll play by them. Just don't change them in the middle of the game. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Jean Eagleson, and I'm here with my husband, Terry Sap. More of you know him than know me. And I'm here to talk to you about an issue with respect to our home, which is 804 Ferry Street. At the time we purchased the property in May of 2019, the dwelling was in very poor condition. The interior of the house had not been well-maintained for decades, and many aspects, the electrical, the heating, the plumbing, the flooring, the windows, and the wall paint, all required replacement and/or repair. Our main goal in the rehabilitation of the Dr. James and Margaret Mills house was to retain as many of the original elements as possible. And a secondary goal was to remodel the kitchen, which was pretty hideous, and two bathrooms that were about ready to sink into the basement, or the floor below, and maintained those original footprints of the rooms. We didn't move walls. We did not make large, modern bathrooms. We prepared an application to the Washington State Heritage Register that was approximately 50 pages in length. This is a, a big project when you take on that task. And our application was approved by the Governor's Advisory Council on Historic Preservation on July 22, 2022. And so, as a result, the Dr. James and Margaret Mills house, also known as Valley Hospital between 1916 and 1929, is now on the Washington State Heritage Register. We received notification of that approval in a letter from Dr. Allison Brooks, the State Historic Preservation Officer, that was dated August 8, 2022. And she, in part, wrote, "Having a property listed in the register is an honor. The benefits of state register listing include potential property tax deduction and code waivers to protect the integrity of the resource." So, why are we here? Well, there's a bit of a problem. RCW Chapter 84.26, Historic Property, presents the regulations for the special tax valuation of historic properties. The timeline demanded in the code requires that all steps in the process be completed in the same calendar year. Well, we completed the first steps in that process, but the final step is for a local review board to review and approve, or deny, the application for special valuation and improvements to historic property. Unfortunately, neither the city of Cedar Woolley nor the Skagit County Commissioners have ever created a local review board. The solution? Well, we're, we're hoping that one is found, and we wonder if there is an existing city committee that could be given the authority by the city council to conduct a review of our application for special property tax valuation and make a decision by December 31, 2022. I realize, watching football games, the analogy, it's the fourth quarter. I don't know. Are there two minutes left to play, and we're on the 10-yard line? We appreciate the time issue here. It has been suggested, though, that possibly the Planning Commission could become such an entity to take on this task. We have restored an important historical resource in the town of Cedar Woolley. It was the Valley Hospital was the only hospital in Cedar Woolley from 1918 to 1929, when Memorial Hospital was opened. That was during the other pandemic. And the house has considerable history as a hospital, as well as a home for Dr. James and Margaret Mills. The restoration process was very expensive. The special tax valuation is based on just the 24 months prior to the time the application was submitted to the Skagit County Assessors' Office. Expenses during the entire three years of rehabilitating the property, total expenses are much greater than what you hopefully will see in the table that we will share with you. Terry and I appreciate your consideration of our request that the task for a local review board to approve, hopefully not deny, our request for the special tax evaluation somehow be assigned to an existing city board, committee, or other entity. We have prepared a packet of materials, including a timeline of the steps that we took, along with all the supporting documents and correspondence, which I will hand over to the city clerk. We appreciate greatly your consideration of this issue. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jean. So, anyone else who would like to give public comment?
My name is Philip Murray. My mailing address is 101 West Woodworth, Cedar Woolley. And Jeanie, thank you for getting a quiet room for the computers. That was really nice back there. Thank you. I am searching for answers of the south end of the library, or east end of the library, where it says exit only. There was talk of putting ballards in there to stop traffic from going through there, but instead, the city has paved that. Who owns that land that you paved to make that corner? I know who it is. It's railroad. And I have asked for the documents stating that you have permission. You have given me nothing. Furthermore, the, the city has taken out the railroad tracks out there between State Street and Ferry Street. And I've asked for the records on that, the costs and everything. You have no records. And I asked him about it. He says the, the city did not take out the tracks. City did. I watched them do it. I have pictures. And I don't know what gives you the right to do that. That property belongs to somebody besides the railroad. They only have needsment. Anyway, that's, that's about it for right now. I have a lot more coming later on, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, Phil. Is there anyone else? Anyone online? All right. Seeing none, it is 6:44. I am going to close public comment, and we're going to open up our public hearing. We do have a public hearing tonight, and this is pertaining to the ordinances regarding our utility rates. And I'm going to start this. This is our second read, and I'm going to open up this public hearing by having Mark Freiberger lead us through the information.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and citizens. So, this is actually the fourth view of the proposed 2023 utility rate adjustments. Just a little bit of background for the audience. The city runs three separate utility funds, enterprise funds, for Fund 401, the sanitary sewer system, for Fund 425, the stormwater utility, and Fund 412, the solid waste utility. Each of these funds is basically operated as, as a business, a business that does not generate profits, however. We, we run those basically as a break-even thing. We have to maintain sufficient revenues, of course, to operate and maintain the facility and replace the equipment and the plant that goes into running the utility and to provide for the personnel that maintain that. Fund 401 generates about $4.3 million a year in revenue, the sewer utility. Fund 412 generates about $2.8 million in various fees and, and charges. And then Fund 425, the stormwater fund, generates about $850,000 a year. So, it's a little less than $8 million altogether. It's a pretty good-sized business that the city runs. These, all of these utilities are basically ran by the various superintendents we have in public works to do that. And then the billing is handled by our finance department very capably. So, in order to operate that size of an operation, obviously, we have to generate the revenue to do that. And we do that through user fees and, and rates. And annually, we, we review those rates to make sure that they are generating sufficient funds to support the utility. And that was, is the purpose of what we're doing tonight and bringing before you our proposed rate adjustments. As we're all very aware, and it's already been discussed tonight, the inflation rate has been pretty high these last months. The Consumer Price Index for Seattle Tacoma is 9.5% for the period that we reviewed it coming into this. Staff and finance and public works have worked together hard to come up with a methodology that would allow us to provide for the operation of the utility and minimize the increases that, that we're proposing to you. And to summarize what we've proposed, we've proposed a 4% rate increase for Fund 401 Sewer and 425 Stormwater, and then about an 8% increase for the solid waste. The 4% charges for the two funds I mentioned will provide adequate revenue for operation of the facility and also generate funds. In, in the case of the wastewater facility, we are planning for a major upgrade in the wastewater treatment facility in the next five to six years, and we are generating funds to allow for that, for the debt payment and the, and the funds to support that project as that comes to form. And we're doing the same for the stormwater facility. We haven't done a recent plan for stormwater. We are, we do have in the budget to hire a consultant to do that in 2023. And after that is done, you'll have a, a, a better picture of the planned improvements over the next decade in that utility as well. We do already have that with the adopted 2009 stormwater, I mean, sanitary sewer plan that we, we recently approved. For the solid waste utility, that's mainly the operation of our three mainline trucks and our roll-off delivery vehicle, plus our recycle yard that we run down at the facility. And one of the things that we've been bringing to you as a part of our presentations is the need of additional personnel, in particular in the solid waste facility. And this, this is a little higher increase than we have requested for the other two utilities because of the need to add an additional driver in that facility. And so, that's built into this. And the methodology that we used for that was to look at a fairly substantial increase in the curbside recycle rates, which could, does a couple of things. It provides a good part of the revenue needed to support that additional driver, and it also brings those rates up more into parity with our neighboring communities in the area. In a review of that, they run about eight, about $10 average throughout our area, and ours have been significantly under that. This one would bring it up to $8. This one would bring it up to $8, which is still under the area average, but much closer to what it needs to be. So that's basically the long and short of this, and I'll open it up for any questions you might have. Again, we've seen this several times already, and after the public hearing tonight, if we are able to adequately address your questions, we would ask for your action tonight in the way of a motion. Thank you.
Okay. So, thank you, Mark. So I'm going to open this up to the public. If there is anyone who would like to give testimony to any of this, you are welcome to come forward to the mic, to the podium. Again, try to keep it within three minutes. Name and address if you would do so. So is there anybody? I'll start with within the council here. Anybody within the council that would like to give public testimony to this?
My name is Philip Murray. My name is Philip Murray. My mailing address is 101 West Woodworth. I ask you not to raise any rates on anything. People can't afford it. Some people can, but not everybody. People just barely can make it by right now, and the economy is starting to go downhill pretty fast, and it's going to continue, from what I can tell. And I'm not an expert, but people can't afford this. People have fixed incomes on social security and stuff, and they can't afford to do this. You're booting the poor out and the elderly out of this town. Pretty soon, you're going to be needing new schools because of all the people moving in. I grew up in Stanwood. They built five new schools. The high school was over $100 million just recently, and people can't afford that. Their property taxes go up to $8,000 to $10,000 a year, and it's ridiculous to keep raising everything up. We're having to build new sewer treatment plants because of all the people moving in. Well, they need to pay for this, not the people that have already been here and paid their dues. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, I will open it up then to anybody online wishing to give any testimony regarding the utility rates. All right, I do not see anyone, so I will turn this over then to any questions or responses by the council here. Is there anyone here who has questions or comments that you would like to address?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. On this one, I think it's just more of a statement, I guess, because it is one of those concerns about raising taxes right now, as everybody else is concerned with the price of living and the cost index and how that is affecting everybody. And if we saw a little bit lighter side in sight, it'd be easier to pass. So it's something I've been kind of torn with and looking deeply into, seeing. I understand the need, and I understand the need for building up the community and planning ahead. It is challenging as we face into an uncertainty that looks like it's going to be a bumpy ride in the next few years before we can settle down, and hopefully it's sooner than that. It would be nice to be prepared at that time and have those pieces in place. And from talking with Mark and going over these meetings, it definitely seems like this isn't something that's maximizing the amounts. It's not something that's getting extras just in case. It looks like it is what we need to get by for getting somebody else on staff and mitigating what we have currently in the community. So it's a tough one, and I am torn by it, and I do hear from people about raising taxes. Again, my first action a year ago was to raise taxes on utility rates. It is something that affects everybody in the community, not just homeowners, but everybody who's renting and everybody who's in a home. So it is something that I am concerned with, but I do see the validity of it. So, thank you for helping.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead. Councilman Owen.
I'll go along with the councilman over there. I'm anti-tax, you know? I don't like taxes. When we approve taxes, that means it's coming out of my pocket, too. And, you know, there's a lot of people it's hurting around here. I went to the grocery store to get groceries for my wife today, and I almost passed out at the price of groceries. I mean, it's almost, went up, almost doubled some things. It's just terrible, and it's going to get worse, I'm afraid. I don't like taxes. I know the utilities have to have money to operate. The cost goes up, and inflation hits them, too, and we have to have our sewer and garbage and the services. We can't have an outhouse anymore. But anyway, I have one bird under my saddle, and it's part of the recycle, but we'll discuss that later down the road. You know, when the recycle started, I was really happy that they're going to clean up some of the garbage and waste that goes on the earth and in our waterways and everything that's recyclable went in our recycle can. Well, now, all the stuff that's really detrimental to the environment is going to the landfill. Very few things is recyclable anymore. And, well, we'll discuss that later down the road, but I know if they're going to continue to run those trucks and...
We're talking about rates, so let's keep it on the rates right now, if you would, please, Chuck.
Pardon?
We are going to talk about all of that later, but right now, we're talking about the rates, so if you can...
Yeah. Well, I was getting to that.
Okay.
But I'll go along with the increase now, but I don't want to put my subject in hibernation. We can continue to discuss it down the road when we get figures and everything, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman Owen. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Councilman Allen?
Thank you.
Yeah?
You know, I realize, especially in sanitation, we need an employee down there. I mean, if you need him or her. Tipping fees have gone really incredibly above CPIs and stuff over the years. I don't consider these really taxes. They are user fees.
That's correct.
And that's what, last week was a tax we passed. This is a user fee this week. So I understand, and all the mandates coming from Olympia on stormwater, wastewater. We keep having to dump a lot of money into newer technology procedures and all that. So I don't think of these as taxes, but as user fees. And I think, I don't like it. I got to pay it, too, but it's just the way of the world, and, you know, we have to keep them current and working and up to date. So, anyway, but we do need another person down there. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Allen. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, so we do have a request by Director Freiberger to consider putting this to a vote. If so, I have three different ordinance here. The first is Ordinance 2026-22. This has to do with the sewer rates. And do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion for Ordinance 2026-22.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Burns, seconded by Councilman Allen, to approve the sewer rate increase to Ordinance 2026-22. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. Moving on to Ordinance number 2027-22, the stormwater revenue increase. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilwoman Kestie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, motion carries. And the last one, Ordinance 2028-22, the solid waste rate revenue increase. All those in favor, or I guess I'm looking for a motion first.
Madam Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Kestie, seconded by Councilwoman Allen, Councilman Allen. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. And thank you for the work that you've put into this, Mark. It's been a lot of work and a lot of education, so thank you for that time and effort.
Thank you, Council, Mayor.
All right, then. Moving on to the proposed 2023-2024 budget, Ordinance 2025-22. And Kelly, this is you.
Good evening. So in front of you in your packet is the proposed 2023-2024 budget, Ordinance 2025-22. This is the second read of the ordinance, although we've gone over these numbers in various forms at many, many meetings. The numbers here are identical to previous information with the exception of the change for the property tax, which was previously voted on, and hoping for a motion tonight as this is the second read and open for any questions you may have for me.
All right. Are there any questions for Kelly?
Kelly, can you save us a little trouble? What did you have to cut since the last read?
These numbers have stayed the same, yet with the exception of the property tax. The property tax number was adjusted. In the previous version, our recommendation was to take the banked capacity plus the 1%. These numbers just reflect the 1% approved by council.
Did you have to remove anything due to the banked capacity, or had you not assumed that?
We have not removed anything. If we, when we reassess, we will come back in 2023 to do a budget amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Lavaca.
Like you said, it's the second read, and I just, I appreciate your time going through each line item that we went through and spending quite a bit of time going through it. And I thank you, Mayor, and the staff for actually putting this together, and it looked like it was very well thought out, and definitely a lot goes into planning out a budget in advance. Unlike a business, it is much different. So I do appreciate that and you taking the time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none. You're looking for a motion tonight?
Yes.
All right. So is there someone who would like to put forward a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll put forward a motion to pass that.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, and almost by Councilman McGoffin, to approve Ordinance 2025-22, adopting the biennial budget for the year of 2023 and 2024, setting forth the estimate appropriations. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item number two on unfinished business, and that is the adding Chapter 8.5 littering to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, Ordinance 2021-22. This is also a second read. And Nikki Thompson, I believe this is you.
There she is. Thank you, Mayor. This is Ordinance 2021-22. We have talked about it once before. This does add littering to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code, both as a public nuisance and then also as a crime if it reaches a certain amount. I am happy to take any questions you might have, but otherwise, you have seen this before, and we're looking for a motion.
All right. Are there any questions for Nikki? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor.
All right. Thank you. Councilman McGoffin, was that you?
I'd like to second, please.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilman Owen, seconded by Councilman McGoffin, to adopt Ordinance 2021-22, which adds Chapter 8.5 littering to the Cedar Woolley Municipal Code. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and opposed, same sign. Very good. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, the new city prosecution contract for services. This is a first read, and Mr. Bush, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson, council. So this item came around in the fall. We found out from our current prosecuting firm, Thompson, Gildner &amp; Associates, that they were no longer interested in providing prosecution services for the city, really concluding that at the end of the year. And so we had to launch into a request for proposals process to look at options for prosecution, and we did that, and there were two firms that responded, and one firm were recommending for the contract, which would start January 1, 2023. That firm is Zachor Stock and Creps Incorporated. Jim Zachor, one of the attorneys mentioned in that name, is here in the audience this evening, actually, back to the right there, and is available if there are questions specific to that firm. Another attorney is on Zoom as well. When you look at the, well, a staff committee reviewed the two responses, and the first, the winning bid, so to speak, was at $102,000, with the other at $180,000. We increased this line item in the budget anyway, anticipating that our expenses may increase. We significantly increased our public defense contract amount last year, and we're paying our public defender about twice what our prosecutor is making. What we found throughout the course of the year is our prosecutor was having a hard time keeping pace with public defense, and so we anticipated that this could occur, and we adjusted for this in the budget. Will still be a little bit underbudgeted, but we can absorb the amount that is the difference that results from the RFP, and that's about $7,000 in 2023 and $11,000 in 2024. So prosecution is a service we're required to provide, going through the RFP process. We did a very extensive advertisement of this. I listed some of the places where we put it in the agenda materials, and we received two firms, but it's something that we have to choose one of them and move forward in order to have this service available first of the year. This is a first read, but it would be helpful if council was so inclined to get some action this evening, just so we can get the ball rolling on getting our new prosecutor up and running.
I'm going to ask if there's any questions first. Is there any questions by the council? Yes, Councilman Kestie?
Forgive me, I don't have it in front of me. Where are each of them located, the firms?
This particular firm, I believe, is in Linwood, if I recall correctly, and the other one was in Burlington. Burlington firm was roughly $180,000. This one is $102,000.
I just have a few questions, if you don't mind, Charlie.
No.
So it looks like you definitely, or the law firm definitely represents a lot of individuals. I was wondering, is there a capacity to handle the caseload that we have for one, especially if crime goes up in some of those areas? It does look like some areas would have an increased caseload or have seen a significant increase over the last year and a half. And then the other question is, did we allocate funds for our current attorney to help process backlogged prosecutions that have not been done, and where is that going to go, and where would we stand with that? Thank you.
Yes. First question on caseload and concerns about increasing caseload potentially. This firm is large in comparison to, with more prosecutors available. We're going to have three people available to us who will kind of rotate through as needed, and they've got depth, and they provide this service for a lot of different jurisdictions. So very confident that they can handle whatever volume may ensue from us. Secondly, in terms of the ARPA funds that we allocated to our current prosecutor to help with the backlog, those go through the end of the year, and so they will wrap up with this calendar year. In terms of an update, we could ask Nikki, she's online, if she'd like to provide that.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that. So as we discussed, when our firm took over, there was a spreadsheet provided that had approximately 750 cases that did not have dispositions listed, and so we had no idea what they were. And so we have done the work and gone through. We now know what all of them are or are not, and we can provide the new prosecutors with an updated spreadsheet that is quite small, that only includes things like matters that are on bench warrant status that previously had an offer on them, or matters that are awaiting talks results, only things they would have to deal with. So we have put a lot of work into narrowing down... lot of work into narrowing down that spreadsheet to basically nothing. And we are also, the way that we have processed all of our cases, we'll be able to handle, hand over all of the current matters in an electronic format and make it a seamless transition.
Thank you. So those ones that are no longer on the, those have been closed out, and they would no longer be on the books. There's been resolution with those cases?
Correct.
And then would there be a tie-in or a period where you have the relationship in case there is any need to reference any information you might have from that, or is it just dockets that get sent over there, and then it's cut ties?
We have everything electronically, and so we can easily answer any questions that the new prosecutors might have. And we're happy to do that.
And then just one last question, if I may. Are you comfortable with this?
Completely.
I was, sorry, I was asking the attorney.
Oh.
It was Mr. Zaccor.
Thank you. Absolutely. My office has 10 attorneys. We looked at the 2021 numbers. It'll be, your city will be on the smaller end of what we handle, so the capacity even with, even if it were a 700 case backlog, we'd be confident we'd be able to work through it, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you for having me.
Yeah. Yes, go ahead, Councilman Kestie.
I appreciate both law firms, and my two cents would be that I would like to at least keep our taxes within the county. So that's where I would want to see it.
We did go out for how long, and I think, Charlie, can you speak to this? It was a process.
Yeah, you know, it was a process. We were, I believe, three or four weeks out advertising this. We did it with the Bar Association here in Skagit County, Watcom County, Snohomish County. We didn't go any further south than that. We had it in the Daily Journal of Commerce, as well as the Skagit Valley Herald, and I believe that's it. Those are the ones I'm seeing here.
But the other ones from Burlington, right? The other firms?
Yes. That firm, though, is an additional $80,000 per year for us. So that was a significant consideration of the selection committee.
Can I jump in?
It's general fund money, yes.
Firm's actually in Bellingham, but she, or that firm represents Burlington Prosecutor. That's as far as what I'm aware of.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I appreciate that.
That would help with your county question.
That is correct.
Okay. So we are looking for some action tonight. Is the council comfortable in putting forth a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would put forth a motion to move forward with-
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilman Lavaca, seconded by Councilman Burns, to authorize a mayor to enter into a contract with Zaccor Stock and Kreps Incorporated. P.S., when and if the council is ready to act, and I'm hoping that you are, you've made a motion. So is there any more discussion?
And what was the amount again? Do you need that in there, Madam Mayor?
No, you do not. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. So thank you. Thank you again for being here. All right, moving on to item number two on new business, and that is the renewal of the inter-local agreement with Skagit County for senior center services. This is a first read, and again, Charlie.
Thank you, Mayor. And sometimes we put inter-local renewals on the consent agenda. I would have done that with this one, except we did change one significant thing that I wanted to point out to you, and that is, it goes from a one-year agreement to a two-year agreement, which aligns better with our budget process. What you'll see in here is the fiscal impact. It's already budgeted, but it's $22,000 in the first year, and it goes up by a few hundred dollars for 2024. So with that said, it's the same service, same exact services that we've been receiving through the senior center. It's the same agreement, other than one year to two years.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody who has any comments or questions? Okay. If not, is there anybody willing to put forth a motion?
Make a motion, Madam-
Thank you, Councilman Owen.
Second.
Madam Mayor, I'll second.
So we have a motion by Councilman Owen, and seconded by Councilwoman Kestie, to renew the inter-local agreement with Skagit County for operating the Seagull Senior Center. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? Thank you all, motion carries. Okay, moving into the last item on new business, and that is adopting a salary schedule for the nonrepresented employees. This is Resolution 1110-22, and again, this is a first read. Charlie?
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. And this item will be a little bit new to you, but in a way, it's not. The salary ordinance is what the council historically would adopt for nonrepresented employees. That was done last fall when I first got here, and it's been done for quite a long time. Way back, we did apparently adopt resolutions for this, so it's not completely out of the realm for the city. But the reason this is a resolution is for this particular budget cycle and going forward, we've done a classification and compensation study for both nonrepresented employees and our AFSMI bargaining unit. And as a result of that, the consultant recommended to us salary ranges for both groups of employees. In fact, they're integrated together. But this particular action would just be for nonrepresented employees, does not involve the AFSMI bargaining unit. We need to approve something like this in order to make sure that we have good clarification on how we're authorized to pay employees going into the new year, our nonrepresented employees. And we had talked, we've been talking with bargaining units throughout the city. We've been talking openly about an inflationary bonus, something that we've consulted with council on previously as well. And so there's a $2,500 one-time inflationary bonus included in this. That bonus is with ARPA money, that's federal money, through the American Rescue Plan Act. So that is money that is one-time money that we previously talked about setting aside. So what you have here is some of the background, and a lot of what I just mentioned with, I'm just going through the agenda materials, but with AFSMI and how we've worked with AFSMI on this. And then as you get down a little bit further, there are 12 steps in the salary schedule for each of the positions. So that's what you have before you a little bit later. We've included the classification and compensation study with our materials as well. These ranges that are included in here would offer the city more flexibility in hiring and the ability to retain employees as well over time, as employees would have more predictability in their compensation. So with that, I'm happy to take questions. And again, this ongoing, the fiscal impact is $83,000 for the nonrepresented staff, and then $35,000 one-time ARPA funding, which is federal funding. This money is included in the budget. It was already budgeted for '23 and '24, so there's no impact to the budget, other than what you already just approved.
Okay. Are there any questions? Councilman Lavaca?
I was just wondering, so it's within the 42nd to 47th percentile for the representative, 41st to 44th. What is that, that's not for Skagit, but what is the Skagit percentile? I believe that that's more of a broader range, like cities and whatnot, but do we have a Skagit percentile that that falls into?
I could not off the top of my head give you a Skagit percentile. Our consultant may be out there and available. I'm not sure if he is this evening. We could get back to you with that answer, to the degree that we can answer it.
Yeah. I do feel like it looks really promising. Our city workers are very important to us. They do an excellent job, and they shouldn't be, you know, forgotten in the long, long run of everything that's going on right now.
Anyone else? Yes, go ahead, Councilman Owen.
I had a question for Charlie. It wouldn't be too difficult to get a readout of comparable cities of, say, from $14,000 to $16,000, and print out of their salaries, so that we have something to, I mean, if you bring up a salary number, don't register with me compared to Burlington or Anacortes, or I want, I want, I want to know what's, you know, keep, keep everything within line. I don't know, I want something I can look at and say, okay, that's within reason. Aaron Berg did that for us one time. He got us a printout, and it was very helpful for me. And I just don't want to make, make sure you don't rob the bank.
So, Madam Mayor, if I may, would that be similar to what's on page 203, 204, 205? And so I guess, Councilman Owens, are you looking for something that's specific for Skagit County?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Compare salaries, you know, to kind of keep it in line.
Yeah.
All right. Any other comments or questions? And it sounds like there has been information that has been requested. So how does the council as a whole feel? Are you wanting to have us bring this back on the 14th, or, all right, I see Ned's head's nodding, that's what we will do. All right, very good. Okay, so that concludes our business for City Council this evening. We will be going into executive session. This is for RC, it's a potential litigation pursuit that we're talking about. It's RCW 42301101. I, we will be in executive session for approximately 15 minutes. Thank you. 15 minutes. Thank you. Okay, it is 7:39, and we are back, and we have concluded our executive meeting. At this time, we are going to close. We are going to adjourn, but I've asked the council to stay on. I need you to stay on. We are going to be doing, discuss collective bargaining, collective bargaining agreements. So at this time, the meeting is adjourned.
Excuse me, Mayor, this is Bill. Are you going to be going into closed session for this, or will this be in the House of Chambers?
So, yeah, we are going to go into closed session. Is that what he was asking? Oh, okay. Yeah, we're going to go into closed session. I am waiting on Glenn. He and Joe and Chuck all stepped away for a minute, so... But we will be in there.
Okay. Just wanted to be sure.